Our public section.
Hey, you're breaking up, Tom.
I'm not, am I?
Yep.
No, I'm sorry. Called to order the planning board meeting for February fifteen, twenty twenty-three, starting with the wrong call attendance. Alphabetical order, Clark.
Clark Brewer here.
Tom Callahan here.
Me, Glassmire here.
Kevin Hein here.
Yerder Hobson here.
Chris Black's here.
Okay, and also with us tonight is our building inspector, John Hallen, our assistant, Tom Plam, Sandra Thayer. And I assume Angela Giesa is out there taking our minutes. All right, so the.
You're still breaking up, Tom?
I'm sorry, I'll try to.
I don't know what you did at the last meeting, but you sounded perfectly perfect and clear.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I'm sitting in the same spot, I haven't done anything. So anyway, I'll, I'll try to. For John. Um, our only hearing matter tonight is, and first up is fifty-five South Main Street, so we can promote everyone for that. Needs to be promoted. I want to keep this to, you know, at eight o'clock, we're scheduled for a training with Judge Cutler in respect to her. Schedule, I'd like us to keep to that as much as we can tonight. So. Cassie, I see you, is John Danaghy here? Understood he was coming.
It looks like John's on, and if you can promote. Nick Hodge from McPhail. Cassandra.
Yep, working on promoting him and Paul as well per your email.
And is Mark Jomano on?
No, uh. James Garfield is on.
Yeah, he's with Morse Engineering.
Yeah, James can be promoted.
Would be Miss Lynn.
And Greg Morris will be joining after another meeting. I'll let you know if I see him on. And Ted, Ted Tluken, please.
Well, again, we're not going on all night with this one tonight. All right, uh, turning down the markets, get us started.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow board members, or not fellow board members. We're here this evening to address some three issues I think that we wanted to address from the last meeting. One of the issues that was raised was about soil discovery. And that what was going on with the soils and tonight this evening, we have. Nick Hodge from McPhail Engineers to answer any questions. And I think one of the questions that was raised about was the soils and if there's going to be some sheeting between our property and also Dr. Pompeo's property, which is on the Westerly side of the. Of the site. In addition to that, we have Mark Jomano.
John, let me just interrupt. Sandra, is Judge Cutler is out there, like to be promoted, and I think Mr. Tluken.
Yes, I was planning on promoting Judge Cutler during the training. Did you want me to promote her now?
She has her hand up, let's promote her.
Okay.
Nice to have Tom counsel with us. I'm sorry, John.
No, that's okay. And then the other individual that we have is Mark Jomano, which I got to find him because he should be on this evening. He's our LSP. And address any of some environmental concerns I think that were raised at the last meeting. And then finally, the issue that really we need an answer to. Is the affordable offsite. And I say that because we're at a point where I know that we need to pay more money to our peer, to your peer review. But if the answer from this board, and I know that. Cassie Mel tested and kind of raised at the last meeting is the answer to this board is that no, we want it on site. Then we don't want to be able to pay the peer review because that's money that's going to be not worth spent. Because we're going to go back and we're going to redesign the project. So that's why we kind of really need to have that answer tonight. And so that was the third issue that we wanted to address with you folks. So I'm happy to start with, I know that Nick is here with us to answer any questions. Evening, Nick. About the soils, because I think that was something that was was raised. If I'm not mistaken, I think Ms. Glassmire, you're the one who raised that issue at the last meeting.
Thank you for remembering.
Your proposal, you don't have any formal documents, we still, we don't have peer review.
Tom, you, you're going to need to be really close to your mic.
I don't know, I don't know if the discussion, well. I don't know if the, getting into the merits of all these things, I'll, I'll let you make a short pitch, but I don't know, getting into the merits of this makes sense. We don't have peer review. I, I mean, with all due respect, we're in a position where, you know, we don't have enough information to make a decision on this project and. I thought at the last meeting, the consensus was that you could entertain the idea of offsite. Is, I'm asking my board here, do you recall that we did that?
That, that was my understanding, Tom, is that it wasn't, we didn't give a carte blanche that had to be on site. I. Like to just see what other options they could be brought to us by the applicant.
We, we said that we were going to look at the decision that we'd made at the harbor. And, and use that as a model for moving forward and keeping the, the offsite option.
That's what I recall, Clark, and so I did share that decision with.
That's right.
We're well aware of our decision.
Wait, 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 there's two.
First issue was the LSP.
We're speaking first, let him talk and then Tom.
The first, the first issue that we had was the, was the LSP. If you want to, if you want to go. And, and just go right to the, the housing option issue. We could do that, but, but I thought the LSP could give us a, you know, a synopsis on what they've discovered on site and what the plan is so that. I mean, it's a highly regulated. Task that they have to do. To conform to all the state requirements and testing and procedures. Not sure, other than anecdotally, what the interest of the planning board is, but, but we've got an LSP here and we asked for it, so why don't we listen to them?
All right, my, my only point is that we're, we're being told that unless this housing issue is resolved, we're not bothering with the rest of this. And so why should we bother with it until we?
Yeah, they might have to do a redesign, yes.
But I thought we resolved it that last week, the last meeting, that we weren't going to entertain an offsite proposal. And I don't need to be reminded what the target decision was because that's how we would do it if, if we allow for offsite in a decision. But I thought that was resolved that we were entertained, so.
But, but Tom, as long as, I mean, I think that what the applicant wants is something similar to what we did for the harbor. And, 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 and as of last week at the beginning of the meeting, I, I, I thought that we were going to get them to make a commitment of some kind. Prior to our making a decision, they pushed back and said, quite rightly, hey, no, we, we can't, we're not. If we have to do onsite, we need to know an answer to this. Is the offsite. Available to us and, and just put it in a decision like we did for the harbor. That's what they, that, that's what they asked, and I think that's, that's reasonable based on what we've done before.
I get that, Clark, and that's, I thought we resolved at the last meeting. That's my point, that we gave them the direction that we would entertain that. And here we are without peer replay, without peer, we have new experts here tonight, give us information, we don't have. Our expert here, and it's, I, I just, we keep spinning wheels here. Chris.
No, I mean, I, I don't think we're spinning the wheels. I think that.
All right.
They gave the follow up. It, it, and they have the experts here to give us a, an outline of what we asked for. So we're, we are continuing the information. Train.
Chris, go ahead.
Tom, my comment was relevant to the low income portion of the conversation. I don't know if you want to get into that now or not.
Well, it, what was your recollection of what we resolved at the last meeting?
There were a number of opinions shared. I thought we were open to the possibility of offsite, but I also thought. The board's direction was. Come up with a proposal, take the time to look at what's around and what would work for you. And we can talk about it. That was where I thought we left it in the last meeting.
Right.
And, and I thought we modeled our thinking based on what, what had been done on, on the harbor. By the way, Chris, someone's probably got to mention this, but, but it's not low income. The, the nomenclature is important. It's affordable housing, it is, or inclusionary housing. Yeah, sorry.
Clark, for, for the affordable housing option, I, I would just be very careful from my perspective about saying, we'll do that. Because until the applicant proposes something, we're not sure if we would or not.
Yeah, right, the harbor, I mean, the harbor, on the harbor project, what the, i- i- if you read. I, I just read it and it, and it's basically says. As a part of our decision, we're not going to do the, the pa- the payment in lieu of. Option at all in our decision. And we said, they could be offsite or they could be onsite, provided that the, we, we meet the minimum and they're in perpetuity. Those are the, those are the critical aspects of, of that.
And so that's something the board has approved in the past and may work in the future, but. And I don't want to say that's the path forward.
And if they can't find the units, you know, then they'd have to do it onsite.
I, I don't want to set the expectation for the applicant that if you do X, Y, Z, then we will approve. Because.
Also, I don't think we agreed.
We put it in our decision.
I also think that we did not agree that it was an either or. That there were options that were not yet explored, for example, eight oh eight Jerusalem Road. That might be able to satisfy the requirement of affordable housing. So we were, we were at an impasse. We basically had three or four. Prospective solutions, but we did definitely know. One thing for sure, which was that we were not inclined to have. Pre-existing affordable housing converted into perpetuity.
Aided.
Rather than getting new supply.
Yeah, I think in the decision for the harbor project, it was, the goal was an expedited. Ex, getting the units on the SHI as quickly as possible.
And that was because at that moment in time, we thought we were behind. We don't even know what we are at this point. All I'm saying is, we would prefer that we don't take already pre-existing structures that are affordable. And convert them into perpetuity because we're not getting new units.
Correct.
That's, that's a different, I mean, that's a different argument.
Well, no, that's kind of what we said, because I recall my points about the village apartments when that was suggested. Anyway, Kevin, please, go ahead.
And, and, and I would just reiterate that point that, you know, it's been two weeks since we had this discussion. We've all come to further. Ideas on it, and, you know, if, if we're talking about offsite affordable inclusionary housing. You know, from my perspective, I'm going to be looking at that from, from an angle of how equivalent that is that to a location onsite. And there's a lot of methods that could go into determining the equivalency. But, you know, I don't think we backed ourselves into one or the other or a specific answer. And we asked the applicant to provide something specific to show us. One of the things too was when they came to us two weeks ago, they talked about one unit being three bedrooms or four bedrooms. I stand corrected whichever one it was, but it was a large size. And you know, you can carve or skin this cat however you want. To make units of different sizes to get under the financial metrics that the applicant needs here. And we understand that, but there's a lot of options on the table and a lot of those rest with the applicant's. Ability to look at those in a holistic way so that this port, board can make an informed decision on them. An informed decision, one way or the other, without having all the information is not where I know I want to be, and I don't think other members of this board want to be either.
All right, and I can, Cassie, before I, I go to you, John, I don't know if you want to add anything, but I think I said this the last time. Look, yes, in the harbor. They had nothing concrete. They said they were committed to doing this offsite. As I said at the last meeting, the harbor project is completely different than this one. With a whole different. Price point involved and what the future would be in that kind of mix. This is a different project, but yes, we went ahead on the harbor project with the idea that. You know, we didn't know what they were going to come up with. They did come up with a solution fairly quickly. And it's, it's already in place well before their construction's finished. And we had the leverage that they're going to build, and it didn't stop them. They kept going and building and developing. Here, we keep going back and forth in this, and I think this, you want a definitive answer, and you're not going to get a definitive answer. You are either going to perform, if we allow the offsite. You're going to either perform that.
Tom, come closer to your mic.
And we're going to take two units of the twelve and make them affordable. So that, that's our leverage. But we keep, we're not moving forward on the project with paying our, our consultants and, 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 and going forward. With the peer review that's necessary. And we keep just going in circles about this. You've gotten as much definitiveness as you can from this board. If, if the, I guess the clear answer is here, we can write a decision like we did for the harbor and you need to perform. And I would just, I would just add to that decision that the units created cannot be located in the village, which has a. You know, market affordable at the moment. We don't, like, as Amy said, we don't want them restricted. Taking away existing affordable to convert them in another type of affordable. So that's it. But we need to move forward on the whole project. And, and, you know, otherwise we're facing a denial for lack of information, which you don't want. And, and we kind of keep, stop going around in circles on this issue. I thought we resolved it last week.
So, Mr. Chair and, and, and board members, then I misconstrued it because my impression was this was still an issue in the air. That's the reason why we were going to review. The language from the, the harbor decision and, and, and looking at that in particular, and you. Reason why I mentioned it is this. We're going to be doing affordables, you know, a minimum of two. It's going to meet the same square footage as if it met, if they were put inside the, the, the proposed. Structure that we're building. So that's, that has to happen, has to happen for two reasons. One, because that's part of the bylaws. And that's what we're obligated to do. And if we don't want it onsite, then we got to ensure that we're going to do it for the town. The second reason, which is why it's important for this board and the town, is so that we meet the requirements for the safe haven. And to ensure that we do build what the town needs. If we don't, then it's going into the structure. So the onus is on us to do it, and I was not under the impression that this board, while saying, yes, we're not going to. Say you've got it. But I also, you know, appreciate our position that, you know, we got. Through our peer review, we paid the six or seven thousand dollars, and then all of a sudden, nope, that's not going to happen. You got to put it onsite. Because that's unfair, because. Set here, then we.
Nobody said that.
I, I, I understand that. And that was my misconception, I misconstrued it, but I needed to ensure that because that's where we're at from our perspective. Knowing that now. Obviously, you know, I don't want to put you folks at a disadvantage. I'm happy to have our LSP talk to you tonight, happy to have our, our soils engineer talk to you tonight. Happy to bring him back to the next meeting. So you have your peer review, you're protected, you get your advice from them to address this issue and address those issues. So, you know, again, that was, that was my, what I collected and took away from it. I apologize if, if. If you feel I'm wasting your time, that's not what I'm trying to do.
No, 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 I'm, I'm not, all right, but I think the issue is resolved, but I, I'll, I'll just make this observation.
Yes.
That the harbor project gave us one more unit than they were required to do. I think, I think especially with the village and the objectives of the village bylaw. If we're going to allow this offsite, we should get that benefit too. So when you say a minimum of two, at least two units, I real, you know, that this is just me talking at the moment, but right, but as far as for going forward. You, we, we will entertain the offsite thing. If we don't, the units are going in the building. Whether it's twelve, whatever you end up building. We, I want to keep this on a schedule. I'll give your soil guy five minutes, your LSP five minutes, and then. Our, our next meeting that's available for you is the second meeting in March. And we better have everything to our peer review in time, in writing, whatever the LSP and the soil guy tonight, that should be in writing to, so it can be reviewed. And let's get this moving. All right, let's.
That's fair. Very fair, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
One more continuance, really. I, I, I think we need to move this one way or the other. All right, so go, they can have five minutes each, but that's it. I want to keep this to, keep to our schedule.
Cassandra, if you don't mind promoting Mark Jomano or LSP, Nick, if you wanted to start just by providing a quick overview of our soil summary.
Yeah, could I share my screen?
Sure.
So, we, we, we've gone onto the site at the end of twenty twenty-one. We did four borings. The boring consisted, it varied quite a bit across the site, but in general, it's, you know, it's film material. Zero to seven and a half feet thick and then an organic deposit, and then we're into the natural and organic deposits. Varied from an alluvial deposit, sand deposit, to like a marine deposit. And then relatively shallow bedrock down. About fifteen to twenty, fifteen to thirty feet below ground surface. Based on these conditions and what we're building, we're, we're only looking at spread footings, you know, down four feet below ground. For the, for the frost protection. So I know there were some issues by the nearby buildings, but. You know, it's, it's thirty-five feet away, and we're only going down, you know, four feet. To, to put the footings in, in some areas, it may be down to nine feet, but then you're building it right back up with structural fill the same day. So the, the buildings really shouldn't be affected by this construction. That's really all I had. If you, if you have any questions, I guess let me know, but.
No, we'll, we'll get this information to our peer reviewer, so thank you for that. The LSP gentleman here.
Mr. Jomano.
Mr. Jomano.
Before we do, what can, before we stop that, can, do we have maps? And diagrams of what we were just told?
Um, I have, I had, yeah, I have not could. Put a figure on this.
I, I would like to see an entire. What would be expected. Portfolio of documentation. Of the site so that we can close that up, put it in the file and say that it was. Thoroughly investigated. So what your, your comments are great. Because they're very colloquial and we all understand them, but we need to have the documentation that backs up what you just said. If that's.
Amy, you, you want to see the boring's plan?
Yeah, I want to see, I want to see, I want to see what they did.
Geotech would put together a plan that has, has the, where they, where they drilled.
Yeah, yeah, so our guy, yeah, so our guys can look at it.
So, so this was the proposed building.
This to put this in the town's files.
But, but that could be something that we get before the next meeting, right, correct?
Doesn't, not right now, but it's just, we will need that documentation.
It's done, it's done, that's good.
Right, it's done, and it needs to be given to Weston and Sampson to look at. They need to look at the whole package of these, you know, these quickie presentations. We're only doing quickies tonight, but. It, it, it has to be thorough materials that are given to Weston and Sampson.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Mark? Mark, you're, you're muted. Thank you, Mark.
Hi.
Yes, we can hear you, Mark.
Okay. The site is in regulatory compliance. Once the transfer responsibility occurred. Ameloria took. Responsibility and we prepared a phase two. And a tier classification and, and it's all on file at the D P. In March of twenty-one, we removed the existing tanks. And they did not leak. So what you're looking at is contamination that leaked from the tanks, probably in the sixties and the seventies. So it's very old gasoline. We've identified a, a small area in the front. Where the, the contamination is above the regulatory limits, and we're going to address that during the redevelopment of the property.
And all that information will go to our. Third-party consultant.
Yeah, I can send them the results of, like you were saying on the report.
Well.
It summarizes all the activities that Ameloria did. In addition, we conducted several rounds of groundwater sampling.
Yes, all of that would be really helpful for us.
Yeah, all, all of that, plus what, how you propose to resolve it during construction, as you just mentioned, so. Okay. All right. So.
I think we kept under five minutes.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I, I, so I think we all know where we stand here. Okay, I, I hope it's clear at this point. We'd like to see this project to move forward. So. As I said, our, our meeting on the eighth is booked, so we'd have to have it at our second meeting, which Cassandra, I forget the day that is.
The twenty-second of March.
The twenty-second of March. So that's plenty of time. Again, you know what the restrictions are about getting it to Weston and Sampson in time. And, you know, so these two gentlemen, all the details that they have behind their short presentations need to go to Weston and Sampson. Anything else you have, if, you know, there's the screening on the roof. Other things that we talked about over the last two meetings, all of that needs to get to Weston and Sampson. They need to be paid in advance. We need to have these issues resolved, so we're not holding this up any further.
Thank you.
Okay, and again, you can explore the offsite. We will use the harbor decision as the model. I would just, again, I, I, I hope I speak for the consensus of the board to stay away from the village. In trying to identify locations for that apartment, you know, not to convert existing village apartments, and I. Strongly suggest you consider more than two units. As, as the quid pro quo for allowing it to be offsite.
Uh, Tom, is that really, uh. I hate to say it, but. What parameter do you have the right to say that? It's, it's a wish, but if they provide the numbers that they are requested to provide.
They're supposed to provide a benefit to the community, and the benefit to the community under the village bylaws to have these units in the village. If they're not going to be in the village, I think we should get something for that. That's all I'm saying. That's my personal opinion. We don't have to agree when we write the decision.
I, I would, I would simply say that we have to ensure. For any applicant, that what we're asking of them is possible. Otherwise, it's. Inconsiderate. Because we can't actually match it from what we have.
Again, that, that in large part depends on what they come up with as a solution. The harbor folks came up with a solution of, of four existing units and, and put a, you know, the restriction on them. They also, if you recall our discussions, thought about. Buying a piece of property, building something. I mean, there's a lot of different ways that this, this requirement is going to get met. There's a lot of options for how to get them. That's just my thought. I think, you know, because again, I don't think this is the same as the harbor. The village bylaw is written for a reason. In terms of the type of housing it wanted to encourage, and, you know, if they're, these are not going to be located in the village, then I, I just think there should be some, some price to that, that's all. All right, but that's just my opinion, but. For the applicant's benefit, they know that they can go forward with that option of offsite, so.
I guess, I guess my view is that from the standpoint of how the public. Understands our decision-making. Unless we have the evidence to show that we can do an alternative and offer it. I think we probably want to. Kind of veer away from making strong statements about what we'd really like, because it's not possible sometimes.
Amy, just, if, if long, we, we've got thirty seconds or so. I, I, I understand your point, but I, I don't think it does any harm for Tom to say what his wish is, or wouldn't it be great if? And the applicant's going to do their best to. Take it into consideration when they explore all their options. And if they could, they can, and. Then, then great. It, it doesn't, does no harm for Tom to express his, his view. He's not saying, he's not going to. Vote in support of the project if he doesn't, if they don't do that. He's not saying that. He's just expressing a kind of goal, wish, and, and it's okay. I think. It doesn't, it doesn't do any harm. He's not saying, I will absolutely vote against this project unless you. He's not saying that, so I think we're okay. I'm happy to make a motion to continue to the twenty-second of March.
Thank you, please do.
So move.
Second.
Good. I'm counting an eye.
Amy Glassmire.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Evan, hi, no.
Jared Hobson, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Alright, um. That, that concludes a hearing business, so next we have Judge Cutler is here, tonight, in place of Carolyn. Uh, to, uh, give us a little training on the upcoming. Chapter forty eight, section five by law review process that we will be engaging on March eight. So Judge Cutler, if you're out there, the floor is yours.
She asked me to just send her an email when you guys are ready, so I just didn't.
She didn't wanna listen to it.
I'm sure she'd love to listen, but she might have.
Well, you know, I don't even, I'm not, I'm not gonna sit here and defend myself about having strong opinions, but we're allowed to have strong opinions and. Yeah, we're not, we're not here, we're, we're a decision making body, not a, a, a coffee class, but that's my thought about that.
Tom, you're not talking about the, the past thing that we just, uh.
You know, we sound a lot like a very large family.
A dysfunctional family, everyone comes from a dysfunctional family.
Half the table wants mustard and the other half the table wants ketchup, and they're not gonna trade.
Yeah. Alright, I know that, I think the judge has a slideshow, are you putting that up for her, Cassandra, or is she?
Yes, I have it ready to go when she's here.
Cassandra's tagline says Lauren Lynn. But we know who you are.
Yes, and Lauren had, Lauren had a family thing, that's why she couldn't meet us tonight, but I, I assume everybody's heard. That Lauren will be departing at the end of the next month, so.
What did you say to make her leave, Tom?
Yeah, that's what, it's my first, now she.
Kidding, just kidding.
Now, you all know, and Clark, you all know Judy Barrett from back from the old master plan, the two thousand four master plan, she's going to work for Judy Barrett.
No, Judy, Judy Barrett was an excellent consultant for, for our housing committee and she's, she kept us from wasting so much time by when we'd say, what about this? What about that? And she'd be like, no, we can't do it, and these are the five technical reasons why. And it was great, it saved our resource, she respected our time. And didn't let us just go off into the wild blue yonder, it was great, I think.
Well, Cassandra, just listen to this and realize. We need these buttons that go yes, no, yes, no, go red, yellow.
I think being in the private sector, uh, I mean, it's not completely private sector, because they do all municipal work.
Yeah, they do a lot of municipal work and we may.
It's a good bridge between, it's a good bridge between the private, private sector and, um, um. And, uh, municipal government, it's great.
Yeah, it's, it's a good opportunity.
But it's a great loss, I think, for, for our, our teams.
We all, we all, Lauren, she got us this far.
Yeah, Cassandra has already moved up to speed dial, so, uh. Now she just needs the title to go with the speed dial, and I'm all for that, so, let's see what happens, um. I just hope, you know, one of the things that would really help in something with the bylaw is, uh. Is the, uh, a town engineer, and I don't, you know, we still don't have anyone. Alright, anyway, while we have a minute here, I got something in the mail as the chair from the Register of Deeds. And it was about the Community Preservation Act.
I got that too.
Oh, everybody got it? Oh, good.
Probably.
So, if you noticed, Paul Hassett got, our, our, the income from twenty twenty two. From the Community Preservation Act was ninety six thousand five hundred and twenty five dollars. Um, surprisingly low, but we are a small town, the big numbers are from much bigger towns, many, many more properties, but, uh. You know, that's, that's money that from our real estate transactions comes to our community. And I know that this zoning bylaw update on the agenda, I really don't have anything to update, so. We can just finish up after we're done with, uh, this training, so, uh, Judge, welcome.
Welcome, hi.
Yes, we got the duty tonight, so the floor is yours.
Okay, well, hello, everybody, I'm sorry I've not met you before, uh, but I am substituting in for, um. For Carolyn Murray tonight, she's under the weather and asked me to, uh, to sub, so. I get, I got, I got the long straw, I'll say. So you have, I believe you got sent, um, a, a. Sort of outline of what this, what this presentation is about, I actually didn't prepare the outline, there's probably a couple of things I. At here and there, but, um, basically, I think we'll be in good stead to be in your folders, uh, for reference purposes. I hope you'll be able to use it, so, basically, um, everything here is going to be governed. By chapter forty eight, it sets, uh, the process for amending zoning bylaws. Also, um, I would note that, um, chapter four, forty five, co-hasset's general. Uh, bylaws also addresses, um, certain practices relating to adopting and amending bylaws of all kinds. Including, uh, the zoning bylaws, um, can we get to the next two? Skip the next, yeah, we can skip the next one, okay, to submitting, yeah, okay, so the process starts actually with submittal. Of all bylaws have to be submitted to the select board to initiate the process of amending or adopting zoning bylaws. Um, and the process will end, as you'll see toward the end of this, uh, presentation. With the Attorney General's approval or disapproval of that proposed bylaw. Um, so you, you start with who submits it, well, the select board can initiate zoning bylaw proposal itself. The Board of Appeals, the Planning Board, the Regional Planning Agency, um, any individual who owns land. That would be affected by the zoning, or ten registered voters, if we're talking about a, an annual town meeting, a hundred. For a special town meeting, and this is pretty consistent also in your, it'll, you'll see it in your own, uh, your own bylaws. Okay, um, so, once the select board receives. A proposal or decides to have it, uh, the select board has to submit it to the planning board for a public hearing. And ultimately, a recommendation and report to town meeting. That's even happens, it's crazy, but it even happens if the planning board is initiating the amendment or the bylaw. Um, so basically, the planning board submits it to select board, that submits it back to the planning board, asking the planning board to hold the hearing. Uh, there's no, I mean, the statute says fourteen days within receipt of, within. Uh, the time the select board receives a proposal, but, um. You know, it's not steadfast, if it's thirteen days, I don't think anything bad will happen. Okay, um, so, once you get it, once the planning board gets it. Um, you have to, you have the heavy lifting. Uh, within sixty five days after planning board receives that referral from the select board. Uh, the planning board has to hold a public hearing, and before that has to, has to publish and post. Notice of that hearing, so very strict rules govern how that's noticed and, um. Failure to do any one of these, uh, perfectly can, doesn't have to, but can result in the Attorney General. Uh, refusing to approve the particular bylaw. So the board has to advertise a newspaper that regularly circulates in Cohasset, you have to do that. Once in each of two six consecutive weeks, first add no less than fourteen days before the hearing. Uh, it has to also, that same fourteen days before the hearing at least, um, has to be posted in the town hall. Usually that's the town hall bulletin board, wherever people would look for notices. Uh, you also have to mail notice to the Department of Housing and Community Development, Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Which is your regional planning agency, and the planning boards of your budding, uh, cities and towns, so your case, that would be Hull, Hingham. And Situate would have to get notice, um, and any of these, uh, parties can. Can file an affidavit stating that they waive notice, I don't know if anybody has done that, um, but, uh. I wouldn't count on it, just send it anyway.
May I just inter, may I just interject, are we on track with this fourteen days for the March eighth here? Good, that's all I wanted to know.
Yes, sorry, I needed to unmute, um, the notice has already gone to the newspaper, so it's going to be advertised very soon.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so, um, so this notice, when it's published, um. Has to be, I would, we suggest it's also published on the town's website, you don't absolutely have to, there's nothing in the statute that calls for that. But, I mean, these days, most people will go to that point. Um, the other thing to keep in mind is that that public hearing notice has to contain certain information. About what the proposal is going to be, so, um, it'll have to state, uh. Where, you know, what, what you're doing, in other words. What, what is the content of this proposal? And so, if you're going to make any changes to the current zoning bylaw text. Or you're going to make changes to your current zoning map, or, or they're, they're interlinked. Um, you have to be able to refer people through that notice to where they might find what the planning board is going. To hold a public hearing on, so it's very useful. If you're in your planning board public hearing notice, you reference the town's website or the planning board's webpage where they can find. Uh, this information and to put the link information in there, so people can easily, um, follow along with what's going to happen.
And if I just, again, may interject for the members of the board, we're shooting for a hybrid meeting on the eighth. Live Zoom, that will cut comments, so. It doesn't mean everybody, it doesn't mean everybody on the board has to be there live, but that's, that's the game plan.
So, um, although some towns, um, also require, uh, notices to be sent. Property tax bills to non-resident, uh, property owners, um. I don't believe Cohasset does this, um. Normally, in order to get notice of zoning changes, a non-resident property owner. Has to file something with the town clerk, alerting him or her that they want notice of these kinds of things, otherwise, um. Otherwise, it won't, they won't receive notice, so if anybody shows up at a public hearing and, and gets annoyed with you because they haven't received notice. Could possibly be because they own property here, but live out of state. Um, so as I mentioned about the notice requirements, uh, you have to state in that notice. Some essential information, go to the next slide. Um, you have to state where the hearing's going to take place and the time, and as I said. A general reference to the subject matter and the place where the texts and or maps may be inspected. That maybe, if you didn't have a website or you couldn't post it for some reason, you could say they're on file with the town clerk and have them there. You could say they can be inspected in the office of the planning board during regular business hours, when you can decide how that is, but people have to be able to get at those things. Um, so if there's, if there's something wrong with the notice, um. If it's not a misleading thing, uh, sometimes you can get away with it, but we'll talk about. How, how the term general deals with those defects, uh, later on, but mostly, unless it's misleading, it won't be a terrible problem. Okay, I would suspect that if you said they, they could be inspected, um, you know, on the planning board's website and then they weren't there. That could be a problem. If there's some quirky little, um, thing in the law that says that if a zoning bylaw amendment is going to affect agricultural. Or agri, aquacultural processes, uh, the town clerk has to send notice of planning board's public hearing. To the Farmland Advisory Board no later than seven days prior, they don't know what the penalty is for not doing that. Um, but, uh, if you're right to farm town, that usually, um, is an important aspect. So here's where, uh, things get sometimes a little confusing for planning boards, um. Before town meeting can act on a proposed zoning amendment, the planning board has to have submitted a report. To town meeting with its recommendations. But the little glitch is, if that report is not submitted within twenty one days. Of the close of the planning board's public hearing, and this can often happen if the planning board's public hearing, for example, you know, ends ten days before town meeting. Um, you may not have that full twenty one days, that, in that case, it won't matter, you can present it at town meeting. But if it goes longer than that and you don't submit the report, um, the town meeting. And go forward even without the report, um, at the time, it's just considered the requirement is no longer in effect, so. Planning board holds its public hearing, within twenty one days has to submit its recommendations to town meeting. Or if there's not enough time, um, playing word can submit it at the floor of town meeting. Um, and if you go beyond the twenty one days and town meeting is held after that time, the planning, the planning board's report. Um, will still be heard, but if there is none, the town meeting can still go forward.
Uh, may I ask, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, since we're holding the hearings fairly early, March eighth with the May one town meeting. And then we are going to have subsequent input from the select board, the advisory board, and the zoning board. Can, can we not close the hearing on the eighth? Continue it to a date in April, in case any changes are made with our discussions. In other, with other boards.
Oh, sure, that's fine, oh, yeah.
And, and then, and then we're in April and then, then we close it then, and then are subject to our twenty one day deadline.
Yes, now, if you continue it, remember, if you're continuing it from the eighth of March. You wanna have some date certain and time that you're continuing it to, so be ready for that.
Generally, we, we would wanna, um, close the, the public hearing, uh, prior to. When the warrant, uh, gets sent to the printer, the final language that goes to the, those to the printer. Um, because it's a, it's definitely a, a good thing that it, it seems like the planning board has gotten their act together on, on a zoning amendment. Um, prior to that, and everybody's had a chance to take a look at it, but, but.
Well, the, the, it doesn't have to be completely final, the way you're going to have it.
No, it doesn't.
End of the day, but, um.
It's better, I think, for the, for the zoning bylaw change, um, on the floor of town meeting to have it in the original mailed out.
I don't disagree, I'm just anticipating a possibility, that's all, since we are doing it to.
Times you wanna make, you know, you want to decide first of all, whether you're gonna even have a motion under that article, um. You may decide after, after hearing on something that, eh, you know what, this isn't gonna work, we're gonna have to go back to the drawing board. Or you may say, you know what, the only way this is going to work is if we add something or subtract something, so. There's no reason, you know, otherwise it makes no sense to have a public hearing, if you're saying, you know, we've got the warrant, we've got the warrant. Because some towns will publish the warrant before the public hearing even happens.
Right, right.
So, you know, so this is just in general, and you can have your own practice of how you do it, that's perfectly fine. But don't worry if it's not picture perfect, um, you know, by the time you get to your public hearing, it'll be generally what you want. And it's gotta be generally what, what, you can't make major changes to it on town meeting floor, so. Um, so your, so your board can, can include further amendments to the proposal, and remember. This may not necessarily be the planning board's proposal, this may be a proposal that a citizen has brought in. That you may want to propose amendments to, so, you know, the fact that, that's published in the warrant, um, you know, is. Doesn't really stop the planning board from making recommendations about changes.
And if I can, I'd like to make just another historical point here, Clark may remember this back. To the two thousand four master plan, which the planning board at the time never adopted. And was somewhat hostile to, uh, and it was a citizens group that we were part of that promoted some of its objectives, but. we got into a debate with the planning board at the time that they acted like they were the gatekeeper who got on the warrant. I just, I would like if you could just clarify that the planning board's role here is to make a recommendation, yea or nay. It is not a gatekeeper to keep something off the warrant.
No, you can't, no, it's the, it's the selectmen, select board, uh, that have the power to take something off the warrant.
Okay, no, that's, I just want to make that point because that came up, you know, twenty, twenty-some-odd years ago with a different planning board.
Yeah, um, uh, you know, the planning board certainly can decide whether it will put something on or propose something for the warrant, uh, but nobody else. Um, okay, so if town meeting should not happen to vote on the proposed amendment at the file, at the town meeting following the planning board's public hearing, and that is unusual, but it could happen for whatever reason, let's say it was a special town meeting, and the planning board held its public hearing even before the warrant closed, and you decided not to put it on the warrant. But you've had your public hearing. You could actually go forward with it at the annual town meeting if if that was held six months, less than six months after the planning board public hearing, and you wouldn't have to go through the whole hearing process again. Um, so that's just something to keep in mind. Um, you don't have, if more than six months goes by, then you start all over again, so the the original public hearing won't, won't really help. Okay, next slide. Okay. So, and I think this goes a little bit to Clark's point. Um, sometimes you pull the public hearing, some new issues come up, and then what do you do? Um, there is the possibility that the planning board, if the planning board is the sponsor of the article, the planning board could offer a motion that's differs slightly from the amendment that's printed in the warrant. I don't know what your practice is, not all towns print the entire text, particularly if it's a long text. Not all towns print that in a warrant or show the the map um in full scale in a warrant, and so um there'll often be a handout at town meeting or something. Uh, sometimes, you know, and again, I don't know what your practice is, some planning boards uh the will move the article as printed in the warrant, you know. Um, others will say as printed in the warrant with the following changes made. And there may be, you know, substitute of, for, or, um, you know, line three of page two uh or something of that sort, or could be even a little more um more substantive than that, as long as it doesn't completely change what you had proposed. So if you proposed, uh, let's say, a new overlay district um and had certain requirements that allowed certain uses, and after the public hearing, you decided, hmm, this isn't going to go over if we require site plan approval for every use in the district, so let's take that part out. So your motion would would be an adjusted version of the text. What you can't do is say, hmm, we're not going to have an overlay district after all. We're going to have completely new district, and it'll have all these new provisions. Well, that sort of changes the whole character and substance and purpose of the amendment that was heard before the planning board and put on the warrant, and it's a scope problem anyway. If the planning board is not the proponent of the amendment, and somebody else has filed it, whether it's another, you know, could be the building inspector, it could be uh the select board, it could be another board in town or another committee in town. Um, and again, public hearing brings certain issues to light, and the planning board thinks, you know what, this could be better. We would rather if it included the following requirement, or it was changed slightly uh in the following way to address those issues. Um, again, the planning board can wait till the motion is made by the proponent and then offer amendments to the main motion at the town meeting. Or in advance, you could discuss it with the sponsor of the article and see if you can come up with a friendly amendment um that the sponsor itself self agrees upon and proposes. So there's ways around it. I think the idea is you're not completely tied and you want some flexibility, you don't have a great deal, but you know, use it as you can just to make things a little better if necessary. Okay. So one of the things, and I don't know why that, I think this may have been out of order, it's kind of a good point with recommendations. Um, this has to do with uh when a zoning amendment takes effect, and often this is confusing to people because there's language in the zoning act that talks about zoning amendments will not apply to uses and structures lawfully in existence or lawfully permitted, you know, with the building permit or special permit before the date of the planning board's publication of its public hearing notice. And so people think that's the effective date, that is not the effective date of the amendment. It's just that going forward, if the amendment were adopted and you had received a building permit under the old bylaw, after the time that the planning board's public hearing notice was published, you'd have to go back and apply again because you couldn't use that permit anymore, it would be no good. It's kind of a transition period, if you will. On the other hand, if you had your permit in hand, special permit or building permit in hand before that publication date, you don't have to worry, as long as you meet all the other requirements of going forward with that particular use or or structure. The actual effective date of a zoning amendment is the date the town meeting votes on it. Whether or not it's approved, you know, and assuming it's ultimately approved by the attorney general, that is. But it's not the day of the attorney general approval, it's the date of the town meeting vote that approved the amendment. So if you have a situation where uh the planning board notices a public hearing on, let's say, a proposal to require a special permit for dog kennel use or something of that sort. And somebody before that, you didn't need a special permit, it was allowed by right. And someone comes in, gets a building permit, build that kennel before that first publication is is or first notice is published, they're good to go, um, even if town meeting adopts the amendment. If they didn't, they're going to be subject to the amendment, and normally, a building inspector won't issue a permit that is contrary to what's being proposed, or at least discourages the applicant from uh from applying for that permit, because it is a transition period, no one knows what's going to happen. So it's, you know, it can be, it can be dicey, but uh you know, you have to put a line someplace, so. So as as we say here, the best management practice is just trying to discourage people from making application for anything that's going to be affected by a published zoning amendment. Okay. You know, I I just want to back up for one minute, we were talking about um the board of, uh, the select board referring the zoning amendment proposal to the planning board. Under Cohasset's general bylaws, there's also a provision that says the select board also has to submit that to the bylaw committee. Um, which is supposed to provide any recommendations on whether or not the proposal is consistent with the town's, the way the town's current bylaws are written, um, or has any uh need for for text changes or reorganization or something of that sort. Um, so I just thought I'd just bring that up, I don't know if you actually do that in practice, but that is.
Well, there, there is a bylaw um committee, but I don't think they've met in an awful long time. It's sort of um, it it, the 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 goal was to kind of do a a review, overall kind of review of 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 um of how the zoning change might fit into the main body of the bylaw, that the the language is correct and that we haven't forgotten to insert it into something that would be changed.
Precisely, but the but the, but your general bylaws also give this um this committee a pretty big job and makes the committee responsible for printing the final version.
When we went with the online A three sixty um thing, uh, that, uh, one of the members of the of that committee stood up and said, well, what are you guys doing? Nobody asked us to review it, we're supposed to be able to review it. It's required in the general bylaw, and everyone went, oh, let's vote on it anyway.
Yeah, they haven't, they haven't been an effective board for twenty years.
Okay, well, just just wanted to.
Yeah.
That little anomaly there.
That's, that is a nuance.
Okay, so once you've gotten through the planning board hearing, the planning board has prepared and hopefully presented a report for town meeting in timely fashion. Um, it usually, and until about two years ago, uh, required a two-thirds vote of town meeting to be approved. Um, however, some amendments were made, often referred to as the housing choice amendments um in two thousand twenty. And um certain of those amendments require only a majority vote. And you haven't really reached that point yet, but you will be coming up, because I think as as the uh zoning bylaw committee uh is is considering uh proposals for the fall town meeting, they will include amendments to satisfy the housing choice. Next slide. So, under that, under that new law, uh, majority vote only is required if the town is going to vote on an article that allows multifamily housing or mixed-use development in what's called an eligible location, we'll talk a little bit more about that. Um, accessory dwelling units and open space residential development, which is in other words, cluster development. The um, those amendments substituted the words open space residential development for cluster development. So as you know, that's the concept where you concentrate development on portions of the land uh that are more suitable for development and leave uh open space um surrounding it. Um, okay. Uh, additionally, uh, if the amendment is going to be one that allows for multifamily housing or mixed-use development um or an increase in the permissible density of population in a multifamily or mixed-use development, accessory dwelling units in a detached structure on a lot, or um a lower amount of parking requirement for residential on mixed-use development, those, if those are going to be allowed by special permit under the proposed amendment, only a majority vote's going to be required, not a two-thirds vote. And the idea behind all this being that um the state wants to promote higher density development and mixed-use development wherever possible, and particularly because um, and then you'll probably get a lecture on this from your planning department. Um, you know, that the town of Cohasset is a uh is an MBTA community and is so is required to actually have by right multifamily housing uh because of it. So, um, next. These are other areas where you might only require a majority vote. I don't know if you've ever considered transfer development right zoning, um, but that's where one allows somebody who owns property in one district or one area to transfer their development rights at that particular parcel to another transferee property. Um, not too many communities have that. Um, also, majority vote, if you're going to modify your general um area dimensional regulations, your height, setbacks, open space requirements, building coverage requirements, or parking to allow for additional housing units beyond what would already be allowed in the district. Next. Um, also, only a majority vote is required if you're going to be adopting a smart growth or starter home zoning district. I don't know if you've got any of those under consideration, I haven't heard any, uh, but those are all governed of you know, they're all special districts, special development districts that are governed by statute. And if those are under consideration, um, only a majority vote is required to adopt those districts.
Amy, did you have a question you wanted to interject?
I would just wanted to ask a question about transfer development rights. To, to what degree? I mean, how expansive can the implementation of transfer of development rights be? Is it confined to a set of specifics? Or is it just, here I I have this chance, I'm going to take advantage of it?
No, usually it's very defined as to where the rights can be transferred and 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 how much, how many rights can be transferred, and you know, and who can transfer or what properties can have their trans- their transfer out. Um, and it basically, you know, it's a trade-off, it's usually within the same district. Um, and allows, you know, one property to remain undeveloped and protected. Um, and it's so, it's almost an incentive to have, um, that property may be more important, may have more important historical value, scenic value or what have you, and um and maybe to a lesser important um area of that same district, you may allow a little more of transferred mountain rights. It's, it gets a little complicated and taxation-wise, it's a little complicated, but there are communities um that I know have 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 been using it, I don't know how how successfully. Um, okay, uh, so, let's see, next, did all the uh majority vote requirements? And then, oh, that was the other thing, um, if you have a combination or a complex zoning amendment proposal, and it has some elements that will would require a majority, only a majority vote, but others that wouldn't qualify for a majority vote, you can't get the majority vote, you have to have two-thirds for the whole thing. So oftentimes, um, you'll divide it up if you can.
So, so when we go forward and create this district for the MBTA thing, we're going to have to separate that from whatever.
If you want, if you want only two-thirds, if you want a majority vote instead.
So, no, we put it into Article four, Article five, or both, we're just going to have to separate those out.
Separate it out, right.
Yeah, all right, that's fine.
Um, now, if you don't get the threshold vote that's required, whether that's the majority or the two-thirds, um, the problem is you can't bring the same thing forward to town meeting again for another two years from the date of the vote rejecting the amendment, unless the adoption of that amendment is recommended in the original final report of the planning board to town meeting. So, first time it comes up, planning board recommends, it gets defeated, you can bring it back again within that two years. But if the planning board had not recommended approval, and it gets defeated, you have to wait at least two years to bring it back. And you can't just make little tweaky changes in it. Um, it's been, it was a recent, it seems recent because of COVID, everything seems recent, but I think it was two thousand nineteen. Uh, there was a case in Barnstable, uh, where the amendment that came back after a negative recommendations from the planning board had some tweaks made to it. Um, you know, maybe there was a change in parking requirements and a change in the site plan criteria, something of that sort. And they brought it back within two years, and um the appeals court said, no, that's not, it's it's not really a substantive change to what we were originally proposing. It's essentially the same thing with a few little, you know, side changes that don't affect the substance. So that wasn't permitted to come back again. Okay, so, um, you're almost to the end here. This is now the, the the most important part to get it finally through is the post-approval process. So within thirty days after town meeting, the town clerk will send the amendment to the attorney general along with proof that the procedural requirements were all met, the public hearing, the notice, all of that, um, and a statement prepared by the planning board which explains the amendment and any maps or plans that are appropriate. Attorney general has ninety days to approve or disapprove it. If the attorney general doesn't do anything within that ninety days, it's approved basically automatically. Unless both the town and the attorney general agree on a an extension of time. And the town clerk uh notes uh the approval in his or her records that it was approved due to failure to act. Um it should it should be noted that it's always a good idea or often a good idea to agree to an extension of time because it may well be that that allows you to supplement the record, explain things better. Um if there was some reason that the attorney general was sort of hemming and hawing about it, didn't finally reach a decision, uh you may be able to, you know, you might be able to uh make sure that there's no disapproval. Okay. Um so, one of the things that happens when the attorney general looking at that, one of the important things that the attorney general does is to determine whether the procedures were followed. As I said, it's a really important key. And until about ten years ago, anything that didn't meet all the procedural uh requirements to the T were just automatically rejected, automatically disapproved. And about ten years ago, um it was a statutory change that'll to chapter forty that allowed the uh attorney general some discretion to waive a procedural requirement that wasn't met if it could be shown that it didn't really um affect uh and anyone adversely. In other words, it wasn't misleading. It didn't prejudice uh somebody directly because of that uh procedural difficulty. If the attorney, and this is, this is not quite correct on this uh statement in this uh in this little blurb here. The attorney general won't disapprove the amendment automatically all the time. Sometimes, I mean, the attorney general must say, you know what? I don't care. I'm not gonna waive it. It's disapproved. But what the attorney general really should do and often and and is really what has to do first is to describe exactly what that procedural problem is and submit notice of that to the town clerk. The town clerk then posts a notice stating that anybody who claims that that defect was misleading to them or prejudicial to them can file their reasons with the clerk and then the clerk will send that on to the AG. Once the AG gets that, then the I then the AG will determine whether or not he is going to to waive the the requirement. Normally, he would only be able to waive it if there was if there was no objection at all. If there's an objection and it it is a plausible objection that somebody is is saying that they were prejudiced by it, it'll be rejected. So there's a, there's an opportunity to cure it. There's an opportunity um to skate past, but somebody could um could stop it in its tracks. Once approved by the attorney general, uh the bylaw as it has an effective date, but it's not effective and it can't be really used until it's published in in the town bulletin, I guess, and posted in at least one place in every precinct. Um and that posting also has to give notice to the public that if there's any adoption procedure problems and they want to make a claim that the bylaw amendment has been invalidly approved, uh they have to make that uh claim in court actually within ninety days of the posting of the amendment. Um and then, once that ninety days passes and nobody has filed anything, the amendment is declared effective as of the date of town meeting, no problem. Nevertheless, you continue to that whole process. Even though it's a transitory process, if you're pretty confident that there's no procedural defects, you know, proceed as if that amendment has been adopted. Okay, so um I guess the other important aspect of this, um and this is, this is difficult for a lot of towns. You don't have a lot of staff. Um and there's, there's changeover of any kind. The town clerk is the officer of the town responsible for keeping a true copy of the bylaw of all the amendments, always available for inspection. I would not rely upon somebody posting it on, you know, putting it in uh the E-code or, you know, posting it someplace. The town clerk is responsible for holding on to that copy. And what often happens is, you know, E-code gets amended um electronically. Who has the copy of of the bylaw before that? So you have to be able to go back year to year to year to year. And um so it's important to have that um that and I like to, I mean, I'm belt and suspenders. I like to say, keep it at the library, keep it the town planning office, you know, it should be multiple places, but the actual the only person who can certify it, the actual copy, um is that town clerk. So that's important. Uh mention that if there are claims of individual, it the procedural defects that didn't go to the attorney general, uh they have to commence within ninety days um after the, after the publication of the approved amendment. Um and uh file that with the town clerk.
While while we're at it, it would be great if in addition to the clerk and the planning board office, planning board members and ZBA members had a had a full, true copy of the um because with this E-code business and in the 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 updates, this on the website, there's a, you know, recent changes to zoning bylaws and you have to the public would have to know to click that on and and also we as planning board members would have to know to get a copy and insert it into our our paper copy.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, be nice.
Although, you know, that's the advisory committee's job, just so you know. The bylaw advisory committee is responsible for making sure that every office and uh um whoever wants one has has an updated copy and including at the library. Somebody should take that on, I suppose.
Yeah, we we are gonna go under a lot of transition with this, but you know, we'll 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 wade through it. I think somebody's talked to the three sixty company and, you know, that they're turning around.
It's not, it's not instantaneous, so we'll probably have some kind of transitional copy.
Yeah, yeah, we are gonna need to, we are gonna work from paper copies for a little while during the transition.
I think.
So can we develop a way of segmenting the pieces that we'll be working on so that we codify things and then move on and not reopen things or is reopening of issues just a natural course of events? Cause this is a lot and and to keep it straight and to make sure that the person at the end of the line has passed to the person at the beginning of the line, the differences in the documentation. Is there just so many ways so that you don't end up not being sure of what's approved or not approved or approved with amendments?
Right. Well, you can always, I think, you should be able to track each amendment by going uh to the town court. Uh the town clerk is responsible for keeping uh notes of all votes that were taken at every town meeting and that's forever. Um so you should be able to go back to verify. And that's how we, that's how we found the stake um having to do with use variances when we were looking at this recodification. Um so that's important to have. But the other thing is, as we're doing uh here, we're doing kind of a a par- partial um amend amendments each time. Most of them will be standalone. There may have to be with each subsequent set of amendments, there may have to be some just really tweaks just for consistency purposes, not that necessarily we'll have to be changing anything major, but any editorial changes can be made um with each substantive change. So hopefully, we're not gonna be reopening. If you if you deal with Article three, you should not have to have a major reopening because you're adopting another a district. You just add the district name to Article three, so it's not, it's not a big, big deal. But it's not possible unless you're doing the bylaw all at once, which is just a massive undertaking. Um and and also still very difficult. Um it's really not possible to not have any changes going forward, any, you know, to any particular section. I think we're just doing it. We're trying. I think the committee is working on it in way that will reduce the opportunities to have to open up already amended for portions of the bylaws as we go forward. Um and the faster we can get this done, of course, the better. Um what what can be sticky, um as with all proposed amendments is just when you think you got it right, somebody on the floor of town meeting, you know, makes a motion to amend with some something that kind of throws things out of whack that no one else thought about before in another portion of the bylaw. So that's the, you know, that's why you have the town moderator there. That's why you have uh town council there and uh to to looking at these things. And in some cases, it may be that the moderator declares uh the amendment out of order. Uh that it's beyond the scope because it affects other sections of the bylaw. Um it may be that there's a way to trim the amendment down so it fits in with yours, with with the scheme of things that you're proposing. But that's, you know, that's just something that you just have to, it's tedious, but it's important to, you know, to keep track of that all the time. Yeah.
The the way we're approaching this, you know, article by article, I I got, the only place where I see a redo in the fall from what we do in the spring is that when we do deal with Article four and five and the two tables, it may generate new definitions. And so then we 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 revisit, we're making some changes at this town meeting to some of the definitions, dropping some, moving some around. To the existing set and, you know, but we may have new terms defined as we deal with other articles. But that should be the only instance where we do that because everything else is pretty much being dealt with in isolation and can continue to be dealt with in isolation. So.
Yeah, uh yeah, I think you're right. So I don't know if anybody has any, I mean, this is, you know, really the planning. He think, huh? So if there's any, you know, any questions, uh you know, I think, you know, you probably have done this enough so that this was just maybe a refresher um and hopefully uh you won't have.
Yeah, our our newer members have not been through it. And uh so, you know, just to refresh everybody's, on on March eighth, we will be doing this process. It is a public hearing.
On my birthday, oh. It's on my birthday.
Happy birthday.
Oh, well, I'm sorry.
Come to the planning board.
I'm sorry.
I I want us to have cake. We have to have cake.
I will have cake, yes, because we are gonna be, like I said, we're gonna be at a hybrid meeting. So if we're there, we will have cake for you.
Can we sing happy birthday to you, Amy?
Yeah, I want, I want you to bring your daughters to sing happy birthday.
We should.
Disruptive for the rest of the meeting, but we'll see.
We should be able to get through it all in one hearing. That's the intent. Um there's really, I can tell you from the bylaw committee's work, and I think Clark can agree, there's two, two items that may be the ones that have generate debate, both at town meeting and with us. It's the definition, the new definition of height and what we're doing with the single lot exemption under uh Article eight, which is.
I'd agree with that assessment.
Where there's an article that our board doesn't even deal with, but yet it's going to generate some discussion. So.
You never know, there's something could pop out of the can.
Yeah, you're right. But a lot of this stuff in the other articles that we're dealing with is very much um the same but reworded and brought up to modern language. And uh the the judge has done a wonderful job with it and and you know, in the presentation materials that are gonna come from the public forum on the twenty seventh, it'll be the same. You'll have side by side comparisons. Uh you'll be able to see text. Cassandra has generated it with the little colored places. So there's some places where there's red with some real changes made to point it out. But this one, this this go around is really a lot of just housekeeping stuff. And I think that's fair to say with with two issues that will generate discussion. And we're gonna go in the order of the easy stuff first and leave the ones with discussion toward toward the end.
But everyone's exhausted.
Yeah, yeah. So again, with the hybrid meeting, I I hope to see everyone there live. I think that would be a good showing for the public. Um for all of us to be there in person and we will get Amy a cake. I will get a diabetic slice for myself and uh you know, and then, you know, the, it's a public hearing. We'll get questions uh, you know. And as far as the presentation, you know, Clark and I are members of the zoning bylaw committee, but we also get to vote on this as planning board members. Judge doesn't know this yet. I'm gonna ask the judge to probably present to the planning board. I think, I think it would be easy and it would, it would keep any questions being raised of me and Clark presenting it rather than than so, if if that's okay with you.
That's a great idea.
You 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 certainly do, you do not have to be there live that night. And you don't have to be there live that night if you don't wish. Uh but I I think that would probably.
We'll make every effort to be there live. I think it's important that people.
And then um and then after us, um we are, I don't think, we have a dates nailed down, but we'll go to the select board, we'll go to the advisory committee, and I think we should go to the zoning board of appeals. Um we have the public forum on this Monday for the rollout. Everything is getting on the website. The notices have been done correctly. We heard earlier, there's a postcard that's going out to the public like there was for the energy, the recent electricity forums. So that will be going out shortly and you know, hopefully we'll get a lot of public interest and we can anticipate questions and issues that are raised well before town meeting and then hopefully sail through town meeting. So that's the game plan. So uh Judge Cutler, I really appreciate you doing that.
I think this is the simple part.
And in the fall, you know, we usually now have our fall town meeting in early December. So we could probably anticipate that in October, I would guess. We would be doing this again and due to the volume of the articles that we'll be dealing with, then we will probably have to do two nights of that.
Yeah.
Uh and maybe adjust our schedule to meet three nights that month, depending on what other work we have. But uh so you will be doing this process twice in this calendar year. Uh so I'm glad that, you know, for this, especially for the new members, you all got a little primer here on how to do it. Uh so um if anybody else, does anybody else have any questions about the process?
Okay.
Alright, so.
I will see you all on the eighth.
Yes, and I can assure the board, you will have the materials uh well before the eighth. You probably will have, we'll probably have in the end of this week.
Yeah.
So um and again, if you want, it would be, you know, the zoning board bylaw committee is gonna show up for the public forum, be nice. The planning board members are there. You come there as private citizens, you're still free to ask any questions you want. Uh that is the twenty seventh. That'll also be at World Cup Commons and be a hybrid meeting. So, okay. If there's no other business of the board, um I don't have anything, I really no bylaw update, committee update, I just gave it to you. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Roll, all in favor, roll call.
Clark, Brew, or I?
Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmeyer, I.
Kevin Hine, I.
Yerja Hobson, I.
Chris Plex, I.
Great, thank you again, Judge Cutler.